Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Planning Commission Public Hearing for October 12th, 2009. This time I'll call the meeting to order and ask for any public comments on any item not currently listed on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move forward into our first hearing. And there it is. And I will read our legal information. A staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe any other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the Oregon revised statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following: The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in Circuit Court. At this time, I'll ask if any commissioners have any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias, or any other statement to declare.
I do not.
Nor do I. So at that time, the procedures for this evening, we'll start with the staff report. Tony?
Right. Thank you, Commissioner, Chairperson Powell, evening commissioners. I'll be presenting the staff report tonight for the concept plan and detailed plan amendments requested by the applicant. As you may recall, the original application for a concept master plan for the Cove and the detailed development plan for phases one and two was approved by the Planning Commission on February 9th of this year. The applicant has come in with 14 amendments to those approved plans which we'll walk through in this and have been identified in the staff report in the application. One thing to clarify is that throughout the staff report and the application, we referenced 216 apartments, additional apartments. There should have actually been 220 additional apartments. Other than that, the application is the same. We did forward on that information to our transportation engineer, Mr. Replinger, and he made a finding that those four additional units would add two trips in the morning and two trips in the PM peak hour and approximately 20 trips average for weekday traffic. He found this to be insignificant and would not change the findings that he submitted and have been included in the staff report. One of the -- we'll start with how we review an amendment to a concept master plan or a detailed development plan. And one of the requests from the applicant, through the master planning code, we identify certain thresholds that determine how an application is reviewed, whether it's type one, which is done administratively, type two, which is a land use here, land use application that's reviewed by staff, or type three, which is what we have tonight that comes in front of you. And what they've requested that if there are future amendments to the phasing schedule, that that be processed as a type one application rather than a type two application as indicated in the code. Staff does not have a problem with this request, but we will leave it up to the commission to determine if that's appropriate or not. The reason we do not have a problem with this request is that what we'd be looking at is everything in that phase would be moved to a different phase. And all of the infrastructure improvements that we're seeing are going to be done in phases one and two, which will be done before any other development on the site occurs. So it's not a situation where you have, let's say, eight phases. Phase five, there's some trigger that's going to require certain off-site or onsite infrastructure improvements, and they could potentially change the phasing to get around that. It's just not a situation that we have in here. All the infrastructure improvements are going to be upfront, other than certain site ones that are going to be associated with certain condos coming on, but they don't impact the infrastructure. So we'll leave that up to you, but we are recommending that it does seem like a reasonable request to amend that phasing so that the amended phasing can be reviewed as a type one decision. The next issue you're going to deal with, and you'll see throughout the staff report, is this old code versus new code. As you may recall, we adopted new code requirements to the municipal code on July 31st of 2009. And one of those code amendments was to the concept master planning process. And in order to approve a concept master plan, you needed to now address the original five approval criteria plus an additional one of the comprehensive plan goals and policies that are applicable. When you approve a concept master plan, it freezes the code in place to be applicable throughout the duration of that application. So when they were approved in February, the code that was in place in February of this year would be applicable throughout the whole duration of the approved concept master plan. So when a phase came in in year seven, they knew what the standards would be and how the building needed to be designed. And if we went through code amendments through that time that could have made this application noncompliant, they wouldn't be applicable. It's kind of a safe harbors type of a situation. So what we have here is the applicant has come in and proposed to amend the concept master plan and add new uses to the site, but also take uses that were previously approved and either reduce them or increase them slightly and relocate them. So we felt that those were two different situations. One, we made findings that if it was a use that we reviewed in the original application and they're just relocating it, that the old code should still apply to those buildings. If it's a new use, such as the apartment complex, which was never in the original application, then it's not guaranteed any grandfather protection. And thereby, the new code that's in place as of July 31st of this year would apply to the detailed development plan for those apartment buildings. And as we went through the code, we identified which code would be applicable, old versus new, and then added that at the end of the staff report. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Yeah, I do. I'm interested about like road layout and the infrastructure, that type of thing. Is that, I mean, there are certain criteria that have to be met during that process. And as it's phased in, we shouldn't see any changes there?
Correct. And the code changes we made didn't affect street layout. We still have the same street layout requirements that we had before. So what it's really going to affect is more the site plan and design review for the design of a building and the parking lots. So those are really the changes that were really going to affect this application. We specifically conditioned the street design, and those will be in place per the conditions of approval regardless of what the code is.
Okay.
So I'll start to walk through the proposed amendments from the application. The first one is, and I've got a site map up, and we'll try and identify these uses as we go through them. The first one is the mixed-use building up here next to 909E. Here's Main Street coming through the site. Here's Oregon City Shopping Center. Here's the Cove. Here's Firestone Alley coming down adjacent to 99. You turn right onto Main Street and the other, an island, a little area out here, Peninsula. That's the mixed-use building. In the original application, the applicant requested an adjustment and a variance to the water resource code to allow that building to be located closer to the Cove high water line and encroach into the buffer. And we approved that adjustment and that variance. As part of this amendment, the applicant is actually proposing to pull that building back out and is going to comply with the 50-foot buffer that's applicable to the entire site. Thereby, the adjustment request and variance is not applicable. We did attach a condition recommending that the applicant update the landscaping plan and the vegetated buffer to reflect that consistent 50-foot buffer. But this is a net increase to the vegetated buffer on the Cove. There's no, we have not identified any negative impact associated with this proposed amendment. The second amendment deals with the condos along Agnes Avenue. And they had four, they had several driveways accesses off Agnes that would enter into the parking lot and enter the underground parking below the condo buildings. They've proposed to remove two of these driveway entrances from Agnes. Once again, this, we don't see any negative ramifications associated with removing these driveways. There's additional driveway accesses, and this would actually probably improve the circulation system, whereas you're going to reduce the amount of intersections that are going to exist. And there was a very short distance in between when you turn left off of Agnes or right off of Agnes into the parking lot, where you would then hit the drive aisle in the parking lot. So we see this as a net benefit to the project. The third and fourth amendments deal with the relocation of the general medical, general office building. As you recall, in the original application, we had up to 80,000 square feet of medical office located on what we're calling the Glacier Site, just behind Oregon City Shopping Center. So as part of this application, the applicant's proposing to relocate the 80,000 square foot to the center of the condo complex and then on the Glacier Site have the ability to build up to 220 apartment units. In order to fit the 80,000 square foot of medical general office building onto the condo site, they reduced the total number of condos by approximately 44 so that they now have 180 units, condo units. So that's a slight reduction. One, as part of, the condition of approval number one from the original concept master plan identified the need for a pedestrian vehicular connection from the Oregon City Shopping Center to Main Street. And that was added as a condition of approval that would be reviewed as part of the detailed development plan when this phase came in, which was phase three for the medical office building. So we've recommended that you review, they've proposed a 20-foot easement along there. Our concern is that we don't exactly know the layout and the use that's going to be on this site, so it seems a bit premature to agree to the easement with and location. We've identified two options. One is the Planning Commission could identify the with and the location at this time, or they could rely, deny what's shown on the site plan and rely on the condition of approval stating that we'll review this as part of the detailed development plan when we know what's going on the site and we have a better idea of how this should be designed, what the layout should be, what the location should be to function correctly with the proposed land uses. So we've left that as a decision criteria for you, but we are recommending that you either amend that location or defer it as the condition states. We would not accept it at this time based on the design and location. We've also added a condition of approval addressing the pedestrian circulation path through this site. Once again, without knowing exactly the proposed use, the layouts, the building design, the site layout, it's difficult to get a pedestrian circulation system through there. We've identified the need. There's a need to be able to get these folks safely across Main Street to this great amenity that they're creating on the other side around the Cove, as well as to the esplanade and the sidewalk that'll be located on the Cove side of Main Street. So you are working at some, designing a pedestrian system that gets folks to the roundabout at the intersection of Main and Agnes, where you'll have, be able to get a safe crossing across Main there to a sidewalk that'll get you to the esplanade, as well as you're potentially going to have streets exiting the Glacier Site to Main Street, potentially at two locations. And we'll be looking at pedestrian connections and safe crossings across Main Street to get to, once again, the sidewalk on the east side of Main Street along the Cove there. So there is a condition of approval that we have recommended. We identified the need for it. We just need to wait and see for the detailed development plan to make sure it is appropriate and in the correct locations to serve the use. The applicant is proposed to add additional property to the master plan boundary directly to the southeast of the property is the Tri-Cities, property owned by Tri-City. And the applicant is proposing to increase the boundary by approximately two and a half acres to provide additional parking for the general office medical building that they've relocated. The parking lot, as the applicant has proposed, will serve joint use for not only the office employees, but also it'll be, be able to utilize for citizens for access to the park and the esplanade. So it'll serve a dual purpose. I think the one interesting thing about the property that they're trying to work with here is that it's an actual, it's an old part of the dump. And they've coming in, and Tri-City's is coming in doing some capping there, and I believe they're putting down an impermeable membrane under there to stop groundwater from leaching through the garbage that's underneath there. So in a way, putting this parking lot in there that's designed to our standards is going to probably improve the water quality in the area by reducing the ability for water to even percolate down to that strut, to that membrane and then get redirected, just completely removing the ability for any type of leaching through that membrane into that garbage, then eventually back down into the Cove, Clackamas River, and into the Lamont River. So they'll be catching that stormwater on the parking lot, putting it into bio swells and treatment facilities for water quality, and then releasing it through controlled points. So we do see it as a net benefit, as well as providing needed parking for both the office and the citizens. As part of this, and we've added a condition of approval, the applicant will need to work with Tri-City's, the property owner, to amend the Tri-City's concept master plan to acknowledge this use on the site. And the Tri-City's piece is currently zoned general industrial, and so they would be needing to go through the land use process, not only for the concept master plan amendment, but also a conditional use and a detailed development plan for the design of that parking lot. And we have that reflected in the condition of approval as well that we've recommended. We are recommending that since the parking lot was originally proposed with the medical office building on the Glacier Site, that it's not new parking. We're just relocating it, thereby the old code would apply to this standard when they did come in for that parking lot design. The applicant is proposed to relocate, the original application was a recreational facility just off Main Street at the corner of the Cove and where the condo buildings were located. And associated with that recreational facility, there was some on-street parking on Main Street. The applicant is proposed to relocate that recreational facility to serve the apartment complex that's constructed on this Glacier Site. And as part of that, they've increased the landscaping in this corner of the Cove, and they've created the esplanade connecting in at a T here at Main Street with a nice connection to the sidewalk connecting along Main. As part of that, we've taken away the on-street parking to reflect the same street design that exists for the rest of Main Street. Once again, we don't see any negative impacts associated with that. This was not a public recreation facility. It was meant for the users, the owners of the condos. In this case, it'll be meant for the renters of the apartment complex. And once again, since this was in the original application, we are recommending that we utilize the old code on the design review of the recreational building. Those were the six changes that you see to the concept plan. Now we'll walk into the detailed development plan. And in phase one, as part of the original approval, we had approved for Main Street to be relocated, and it kind of swung in further away from the Cove through this section. And what the applicant is proposing is to reconstruct Main Street in its existing location. And what we've reviewed is that the applicant is proposing to rebuild Main Street within its existing right-of-way. They will not encroach any closer to the Cove than where the existing edge of pavement is. And per the Oregon City Municipal Code, if you're not increasing the impermeable surface, you are allowed to rebuild, replace an existing road. So that was the finding that we made, is that they are working within the existing impervious surface of Main Street. They're not encroaching any closer to the Cove. And within that right-of-way, they will be designing the street with bike lanes, obviously travel lanes, a swale on one side, planter strip, and sidewalk on the Cove side. So this is, I think it's important, if you do have questions about this or concerns, that we do discuss them, because we're making the finding that this is an outright permitted use to reconstruct Main Street within its existing location. And that because it's a permitted use and they're not encroaching any closer to the Cove, that we did not require an additional water resource, in this case, under a new code, the Natural Resource Overlay District report. We relied on the old one, and they submitted a letter describing what they were going to do, and that it is a permitted use in the new code as well. So I think we're covered there. But certainly, if you do have questions or concerns about that, we'd be happy to address them either now or at the conclusion or after the applicant's presentation. The applicant is proposed to relocate the restrooms in the North Park area to the south, southeast corner, adjacent to the 20 permanent parking spaces that they're going to be creating to serve the North Park. We didn't see this on the original application, so we're treating this as a new, a new use on the site. So the new code would apply. The applicant would need to submit additional information concerning landscaping around the restroom, the design of the restroom, and showing compliance with Chapter 1742, the Flood Management Overlay District. We have no reason to believe that this can't be met, that it can't be designed appropriately. We put restrooms in at Clackamette River, at Clackamette Park and John Storm Park, John Storm Park very recently. So it's more just of providing the additional information that we need. It seems like an appropriate location within the park, and we don't have any concerns with that. The applicant has indicated that Agnes Street will need to be expanded from 60 feet to 65 feet to accommodate additional storm swales. As part of the condition of approval for the original concept plan, we identified the need, the potential need for additional right-of-way once we got into the engineering design review of the street sections. So we feel that the original condition of approval 20 from the concept plan, the original concept plan addresses this. We don't see a need to go back and amend anything or attach a condition of approval. In that condition, we identified that slight increases to the right-of-way may be needed based on certain design and, once we get to the final. So we believe that we've addressed this, and there's no additional conditions needed. The applicant is proposed to develop Agnes Avenue between Main Street and the North Park as a full half-street improvement, as opposed to a 20-foot paved section, which we approved. Staff does not see any negative ramifications associated with this and recommend that you accept that. Then the applicant is proposed to construct a 20-foot section from the North Park to Washington Street. And the original application, the applicant has proposed a 20-foot gravel section, and the Planning Commission attached a condition of approval that required the applicant to put in two 5-foot bike lanes, one 11-foot travel lane, one 6.5-foot planter strip, and one 6-foot sidewalk for that section between the North Park and Washington Street. And as you're in the car, this is going to be borrowed off for emergency access only, but it would serve for bike and ped connectivity between those two areas. We're leaving this up to the Planning Commission. We've made our recommendation. You have a previous condition of approval that addresses it. If you wish to change that to allow them to build a 20-foot section, you can certainly do that. We are recommending that you rely on the condition of approval that you previously had, but we'll certainly be happy to answer any questions or concerns you may have about that. The applicant is proposed to delay the construction of the monument sign at the corner on the south side of Main Street, just east of Firestone Alley until phase four. And then the applicant is proposed to, has provided details on the 28 parking stalls that were required per the condition of approval two from the original application. So we went ahead and we reviewed that parking lot design in our, in our site plan design review, and we'll get that, see that a little bit later in the staff report. The applicant is proposed to create 20 of the stalls now permanently, and then have eight that would be temporary, and those eight would be relocated to the parking lot on the Tri-City site at a later date. So we reviewed the permanent facility for compliance with the Oregon Municipal Code, and we're recommending that that temporary site not meet the requirements of the code since it is temporary in nature and it's going to be a tear-out at a later date. If you don't agree with that, please let us know, and we can certainly apply the standards per a condition of approval. The detailed development plan for phase two included amendments that changed the phasing schedule for two activities. One is for the grading of the condo three and four building pads. Those have been delayed to phase four. And then the restoration planting on the northwest peninsula, which is, which is the arm between the Cove and the Clackamette River on the north side of the site, that that would not be completed until phase four. Some work will probably happen incrementally, but the actual, to have it final done would be in phase four in, coinciding with the construction of the condos on the site. Staff is recommending that you can approve these amendments as proposed for that phasing change. We don't see any negative ramifications associated with that. Part of the approval for the concept development plan deals with transportation. The city and the Oregon Department of Transportation has reviewed and commented on the applicant's revised transportation impact analysis that was prepared by Kittleson and Associates. Mr. Replinger has gone through, and we reviewed the incremental increase. We had the base data of the original concept plan, which we reviewed, the total trips being created on the site and what those impacts would be. We've worked off of that base data and then incorporated the proposed amendments. So for example, the reduction in the condo units. So those changed the number of trips. The addition of the 220 apartment units, so that obviously increased it. There was, there was about a 10,000 square foot increase in the office permitted on the site, and a very minor, probably within a thousand square foot increase in the kind of the group of commercial retail restaurant. All those have been reflected in the amended, in the TIA additional information. And what we found is that there's approximately 440 net new trips. It would result in 80 net new AM peak trips and 95 new, net new PM trips. In working with the Oregon Department of Transportation, the applicant, and our, Mr. Replinger, as part of the original application, we identified improvements to 99E targeted at Firestone Alley and how that would function. And the applicant was contributing funds to that to mitigate their impact. Due to the increase in the number of trips during the AM and PM peak hour, we've identified the need for an additional $20,000 to be added to that original $100,000 that was agreed to in the original condition of approval to address those improvements along 99E and Firestone Alley and in that area. We have not identified any additional off-site mitigation measures that are necessary with this amendment. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have. The, we asked Mr. Replinger to go into and kind of talk about the Institute of Transportation Engineering, the ITE manual that we use in creating our trip generations. This is, this is a manual that's based on several studies of land uses and the trips that are generated associated with those land uses. Mr. Replinger has identified no reason why the ITE manual is not the appropriate vehicle to use in reviewing this application. You've probably seen comments within the staff report addressing why they're not appropriate, that there's probably going to be additional trips associated with this type of development, whether it be because there's apartments on the site and they utilize more services, which would create more trips. Mr. Replinger doesn't think this is accurate at all. You know, a lot of the trips that were identified, like going to the doctor or going to a service, are infrequent in nature. That's why it's, you don't go to the doctor five days a week. So that's why the numbers that were proposed and put forward are not applicable here. We believe he's done an adequate job of addressing why the ITE manual and the trip uses that they've designated to the uses on the property are accurate. And if you have any questions, we can try and answer that. And I noticed the applicant also has representative from Kittleson and Associates here who could probably answer any questions you have as well, since they wrote the, the impact analysis. Mr. Replinger also walked through the trip reductions that are occurring on that site and why he felt it was appropriate, that the trips generated from the site were reduced. And what you're looking at is, you know, in a mixed-use development, you do have the potential for folks to walk or bike to other uses rather than relying on the car to get for basic services. And so he walked through why we utilized the percentage reduction in trips that we did. Another criteria addresses, infrastructure. The applicant will be utilizing the same stormwater, design standards, and best management practices on the site. We see no reason why these amendments would negatively impact those, those designs and their effectiveness. Water, sanitary sewer, those will all be brought up to grade. We don't see any additional conditions of approval necessary to meet the demands on this site. We've gone through, criteria four addresses GO5, and we kind of talked about GO5, which is the protection of the natural resources in the area. And so that goes back to the finding that we're relying on the And so that goes back to the finding that we're relying on the water resource that was submitted as part of the original application, which dealt with mitigation for the grading, mitigation for the tree removal. The finding was that this was a degraded, pre-existing industrial site. We approved the reduction in the buffer as well as additional mitigation measures throughout the site. The applicant's not proposing to amend that and change those impacts in any way. Those preservation and mitigation measures that were in place as part of the original approval are still in place as part of this approval. And once again, this goes back to how we're treating Main Street. Main Street is where it is. That's the existing condition, and that's what we're comparing this amendment to. We're not comparing it to, it's been moved, because it never has actually been moved. That was part of a plan that never occurred. So that's the discrepancy that we need you to make a finding in the affirmative or negative As part of the update to the code, we added the sixth approval criteria for a concept plan, which is addressing the comprehensive plan goals and policies. The applicant went through and addressed the goals and policies. We sat down with them and walked through and identified what we thought were applicable goals and policies. In the applicant's application, they did go through and address those. I've gone through and summarized, tried to summarize how, taking all those goals and policies, what they're really trying to meet. We believe that this furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, looking for a vibrant mixed-use community down on that site, utilizing urban renewal to replace and improve blighted areas. I believe this does a lot to improve the natural habitat in this area. So I believe you're implementing your goals and policies through the amendments that are proposed here. You're certainly not, you're causing this application to fall out of conformance with the goals and policies of our comprehensive plan, in my opinion. Be certain to gladly answer any questions you have about any of those goals and policies that you may disagree with. As part of the amended application concerning Flood Management Overlay District, through the proposals to leave Main Street where it is and some reduced grading that's necessary on the site because of the change in uses and the demands of those users, they've actually increased the storage capacity on the site by approximately 1,000 cubic yards for a total of 1,900 cubic yards of excess storage being created via this application. Concerning the off-street parking we discussed earlier, we reviewed the 20 permanent stalls that are going to be located adjacent to the North Park area, and we attached a condition of approval. What the code says is you can't have more than eight parking stalls in a row without interior landscaped island, so the applicant did have that. We've attached a condition that they need to provide that. It should just be a minor adjustment to the drawing. Other than that, the parking lot is in compliance. We did add an additional condition concerning, sorry, there it is. The parking lot is up here next to the North Park, some type of a marked pedestrian crossing across the private drive aisle going into that parking lot. In the future, you are going to have some type of a sidewalk connection running across that parking lot, so some type of a raised or marked pedestrian crossing was an additional condition we did add, are recommending. I think as we went through the staff report, we identified on page 42 of your staff report, right towards the end, we laid out the eight areas that staff had concerns or made recommendations that we believe that the planning commission would have interest in and would want to make findings on. Certainly, there may be others after you've heard this presentation, but these are the ones that we identified, and we've talked about these. The first one is addressing whether phasing amendments should be reviewed as a Type 1 or a Type 2 application. We are recommending Type 1 because all the infrastructure improvements are upfront, and we would be moving the entire phase. We wouldn't be taking half of Phase 3 and moving it to Phase 5 if that's what the applicant proposed. We would put him into the land use process. The second issue addresses the easement, and that you should reject the proposed location of the easement as described by the applicant, and that we should either identify what the minimum we would require in the location or rely on the previous condition of approval, which delays it to Phase 3 detailed development plan, which is what staff would recommend, so that you have a better understanding of what the use on the site was, it can be designed appropriately for the use, and where the buildings are going to be located, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, that would be a Type 2 review, so that would be done at the staff level. But we believe we understand the intent of what the PC is looking for on that issue. The third issue is that the applicant's proposed to amend the application and include up to 220 apartment units, and that the code in place on July 31, 2009 would apply to those units, and that the public restrooms would also need to comply with the July 31, 2009 code amendments. Everything else that's proposed to be amended, we are going to rely on the old code that was in place. The original application included wall seating and a benchell within the North Park area. Those improvements were not reflected on the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. So we're not sure if that was an omission or oversight, or if they weren't proposing to construct those anymore. We're recommending that those improvements still be constructed. That's what was approved on the original concept plan, as well as the original detailed development plan. The applicant has not proposed in writing to not provide those. So at this point, we're proposing you make a finding that those are still applicable. We've talked about the proposal to not move Main Street and the impact on the water resource of the Cove. And then, the last one deals with the design of Agnes Avenue between the North Park and Washington Street, whether you accept a 20-foot paved section or the condition of approval as previously required. With that, I will conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions you may have. I guess the one other thing would be that if this is approved tonight, in the conditions of approval where we reference 216 units, we will be changing that to 220.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, and looking at, sorry, my map here. On the North Park, I have two questions. One, the North Park area, you've got the parking lot that's in there. It appears the condo building number six also has some incremental parking there. And I guess my question is, how do we guarantee that that parking lot remain public and not be used as overflow for condo number six? And is there some sort of signage that could be done to handle that? The second question I have is, I'd like a little more detail, and I don't see it on here, but that direction, or the Agnes between North Park and Washington, that particular road we're looking at, I don't see it on here, and maybe you could have a little closer inspection of that, so we know what we're looking at.
This is the road section that we're between. Here's North Park. This is what we're calling North Park. And this is where Washington Street is. On the west side of the I-205 interchange, that's Washington Street again. 213 turns into Washington Street.
Oh, okay.
And then, Agnes comes off of there. So we're referring to that section between North Park and Washington Street. We're calling that.
Okay. Well, that's where my confusion was. For some reason, I was thinking Agnes and...
It's the unbuilt section between here and existing Agnes, which intersects with Washington.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. I have no further questions. Staff, you guys have any questions?
I just have a question about how ODOT's review relates to the TIA. I think they identified a discrepancy of between 25 and 55.
The 15% and the 25%?
I'm looking at the October 2 memo to Gail Curtis from Josephoth, and there's a table referenced there. I'm wondering how that relates to the TIA.
Can I have a second? I'll look at it, and I can come back to you.
Well, we could ask the traffic experts when it's time. I thought if you had a simple thing for me that...
And you just, there's a discrepancy between the 20...
I'm just curious about how this information relates to the TIA. How is it reflected, and how is it handled in the staff report? How is this information handled? It looks to me like ODOT's saying there's going to be more traffic than the TIA says there's going to be, and I'm wondering, I'm confused about it. I guess I want to understand it a little bit better.
Okay. We have both ODOT and the applicant, and I will read through and see if I can kind of understand what you're asking.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, good.
Good evening, Chairman Powell and members of the Commission. We're delighted to be before you once again and show you some things that you haven't seen before, and look forward to hearing what questions you might have. The kind of guiding light here for us in terms of this particular exercise is that we're not looking at going back to square one, we're not looking at starting over. And that's why we couch the changes that we've proposed as amendments to the already-approved plan. Now, since we had our last approval from you guys, we did have a number of approvals from the Urban Renewal Commission. They approved and executed the DDA, the Disposition and Development Agreement. They approved the overall master plan. They approved Phases 1 and 2, and they approved the amendments that are before you tonight. So we're feeling good about all that, and it feels nice to have some momentum and be moving things along.
One of the annotations to the amendment, it was actually at the request of the city that we make these changes. The request was that the office building independently or the apartments independently didn't have enough product to come in and start at the right time to create enough increment. So the idea was how could we, in fact, add more production to our program sooner? And a couple of items which work in the current marketplace are apartments, and offices, offices are still a little bit light. So we decided to cut back on the condominiums, include the apartments, and also add the offices between those units. So it was really at the request of the city. How do we, in fact, create more increment sooner? I think we've gone through most of the modifications, but this is kind of a quick recap. You know, the site, the thing which is a little different here is the location of the new piece, which is right here, 2 and 1/2 acres, which we're negotiating, and the city's negotiating with Tri-Cities. So that will give us, really, the real benefit here is that when we have any major venue enjoying the waterfront, that this will give us a real nice capacity for the public to utilize as parking. Ordinarily, when we've done projects of this nature, where we've done them in concert with the city, we create a reciprocal use. In this case, it's part of the DDA that we create a program with the city so that they can use that in off-hours and when it's not being utilized by the office. I think there is actually a request as part of the DDA that 55 spots of the 250 to 270 units are permanently reserved.
Why don't you walk through this, Randall?
Well, I think everybody knows about the site location, so we can probably buzz through Now, the amendment summary, we'll go through that. We talked about reducing, or Tony did, by the way, I think, an excellent job in terms of his preparation of the staff report and his delivery of the staff report. He's a good asset to the community. But the idea of reducing the footprint of the mixed-use building has all positive effects. It brings it into a situation where it no longer requires variance, and we think that's a positive change.
We're just, this little corner right here on this plan where it actually was over a little bit, so we just modified that to make it work.
The removal of the two driveways on Agnes, those are the accessways into the condominium buildings, and by creating fewer access points, but somewhat longer, we can actually reduce the grade and make it a more, a better flow of traffic in and out of the condos to Agnes.
This area right here on this master plan was where there was a driveway going in, and on the bottom side here also.
The 80,000-square office building, we talked about, that at one time was going to go to Kaiser. And when they changed their plans, that's when Ed was talking about, the Urban Renewal Commission said, what can you do to do something that can happen now and provide more of an increment sooner? And that's when we came up with the idea of doing the 220 apartment units in what have been the, not Kaiser, Glacier site, and also to put that office building in the middle of the condominium buildings. And that has some extraordinary benefits from a design standpoint that we'll talk about a little bit further down the road here. The addition of the 220 apartments, again, is something that's economically viable at this point in time and can be an asset to the overall community.
One of the requirements of the DDA is that these apartments actually start prior to the major commitment of the contribution by the Urban Renewal Agency. So the 220 not only have to be approved, but we actually have to record them and actually be prepared to break ground on those units prior to the city making their larger commitment to do the infrastructure. So Phase 1 and Phase 2 will not start until we actually record a loan and break ground on those apartments.
The requirements are that all the land use approvals be in place, that the building permits be in place, and that the loan be recorded.
The 2 and 1/2 acres is this piece which we've talked about with Tri-Cities. And then, the relocation of the rec building, which was right here and now becomes more of a public space, is now over here.
Because of the need to provide space for the office building, we needed to reduce the number of condominium units, so we took it down from 224 to 280. That's actually, what, about a 20% decrease? So it's a significant reduction, but it helps the overall project.
The existing alignment, which I believe Tony's already discussed with you, was actually coming over here and coming in. The requirement that Kaiser had was to be down to about nine acres. When we made the modification to go to apartments, to have more apartments, it was actually a more positive part of the program. So we went back to the original alignment of the road. We spent a lot of money accommodating Kaiser, but when they actually decided not to move forward because of their capital cutbacks, it actually works out very well. We're actually saving money in terms of what doesn't have to be done in terms of moving that road, so it's a positive part in that respect. Gives us about 11.6 acres for the apartments. So the apartments are not super-dense, but it's a nice density for the site.
And just to make sure that there's not any confusion about Kaiser, they, like many big hospitals, like many universities, have kind of an endowment, and they have somebody that manages the investment of those funds for them. And with the recession, they had some pretty severe losses in the monthly millions of dollars. So it didn't have anything to do with the location, with Oregon City, with the site. It was purely an economic difficulty that they ran into.
I think we can just march through these a little quick. I think Tony brought most of these up. This kind of shows you where the major changes have occurred. We have the apartments over here, which was Kaiser. We've now taken that office complement and moved it into the center of the condos, which has a really a nice impact in terms of what we had before was, and it was brought up by one of your commissioners who isn't here this evening, the architectural guy.
Ken, would you want?
Yeah, and he thought that we had too much of a straight line going across here. What we've done now is we've modified these quite a bit, and we've got a lot of articulation in terms of the elevation and how it will be read. It will not be a wall, quote unquote, of condominiums. That's very positive. The bathrooms are over in this area. This is the mixed-use building, which we slid over from this corner, and it has all of the other listings, which are the marinas and those things which occur in Phase Eight. And this is just the specific changes, the relocation of the restrooms, the roads being taken out here and here, the addition of the 2.55 acres, keeping Main Street where it is, taking the rec building and moving it right to here, and then doing the apartments, and then the mixed-use building. The phasing is basically the same, and I think one of the things which Tony brought up is the ability to move from one aspect to another in terms of the phasing. Our preference here would be to kick this off directly, bring this on, and we did have a player that we were working with that was a potential user of that building. That has not, we haven't finalized that. It looks like that's not going to happen, so we will be back into the marketplace for this building here. That will be with the parking as part of it. This is going to recaps each of the items, the mixed-use building, 220, and the number of condos as you move through. And we have a little picture here that shows this elevation and how it works out a little bit better. This is our original plan. We've dropped two units out of this building to create this visual articulation. We've dropped a whole floor across here, and then on this one, we've not only dropped a floor, but we've dropped out these two end units, and then we stepped it. This is repeated and flipped on the other side of the office building. So instead of having what in fact is a pretty linear streetscape, if you would, from the roofline, now it's very articulated. I think it'll be a very nice change. And I think there was a statement that, well, you know, the buildings don't really seem that extraordinary. If you look here, I mean, this is a lot of articulation. We're popping this part of the building out. These are stair elements that go up. This is the elevator element here. This is a stair here, and then the other side. It really, in terms of a front elevation, has a lot of visual change. On the backside of most any project that we've done, and we've done a lot of waterfront projects, they become pretty linear, they're pretty straightforward, because you want to have the decks out there, you want to have the windows. So those are a little bit straighter, but when you come down and drive through this project, this will be a very nice look. This is the apartment project where we had talked about doing the driveway. It doesn't show on this one, but it was coming down here and going into the Oregon City Shopping Center. Tony's requested that you reject that. That's fine with us, because we can actually go through a very formal process when we do the detailed development plan, so we would be in concert with Tony on that. The rec building being in this location. Just an aerial view. Front elevations. And an overall view, so we can see it from this side.
That front elevation was also the rear elevation, was it not?
It was.
Building looks good from all angles.
This is the office complement here. It drops down a little bit lower, but we could potentially go from 65 to 80,000 square feet. This is a walkway, which right here is showing suspended. It may or may not be exactly like that, but the complement and the gross square footage is what we're shooting for right now, and we'll ultimately come up with a final design. When you go to the water side, it's a very nice presentation, and it has an opportunity to have a lot of public input here. This is all public area, public area, a water feature that comes down through the middle, and public area here. So it becomes a real nice public space. This is the area that, right here is this little blue piece, which when we went to Tri-Cities, they thought that they were getting squeezed a little bit here with their design on their new facility that they're expanding, and said that, you know, "We would like to do a trade with you. We would like this 22,000 square feet here, and we'll consider that as a trade for the two and a half acres." The intent is not to do a formal change of ownership, but to actually do a lease. So the intent is that the city would actually lease the property and then assign that lease to us. And these are those two spots, about 21, 22,000 here and about two and a half here. This is the mixed-use building, and where we have the, oops, doesn't want to go backwards. Where we had the little point was right here where it was encroaching. And we're looking at the different potentials. The unique thing about this site is that you have to put a parking structure in just to get out of the floodplain, and it's a two-deck parking structure. And what happens when you go through and do an urban setting like this, it, the cost of doing the parking structure almost is the same cost as the dirt, so it's really not a high profitability. The dirt becomes not really worth much at all once you go ahead and put the parking structure in, which gets you the ability to build the building. So it doesn't have a lot of value in terms of dirt, but the increment that it'll ultimately support for the city will be very positive in doing either offices, or in this case we were showing another use here, which would be the potential of saying we'll do a yacht club, and that could include a, where people could actually bring their boats in, we could, you know, set them up so that they would actually be able to be serviced, not in terms of work, but in terms of just putting any of the goods that they'd like to have on them for going for a trip, actually going with maybe a vertical type use of having slips there, and then having maybe a masseuse, basically a recreation club that would be part for the condominiums and also for the general public. There are some very successful ones like this that have been done. In Florida, we have talked with the guys that have produced those, they've done almost $200 million with them down in the Florida area. So they're very positive, but they're selling them as condominiums. We wouldn't necessarily be doing that. We'd be actually doing it on a lease program. So that's an alternate use. Another alternate use here was the potential of doing a small hotel, so it would accommodate that. I think that's the end of our presentation.
Well, just a couple concluding comments. We've been working on this project for over three years now, and we sort of lost count of how many public forms we had. I think we're up to about 16. And we've got a lot of good ideas, and one of the things that we noticed is that people seem to be kind of in three categories. They either have a really strong environmental interest, and they're interested in what happens to the habitat, and we think that we've got some great answers for that in terms of actually increasing not only the quantity of the habitat, but the quality of the habitat, and a variety of things that we'll do that will actually improve the environment. Another group of people are those that are interested in the economic development and the number of jobs that will be created, both temporary jobs during construction and permanent jobs, and the tax revenues that'll derive from the land, the property taxes, as well as people's income taxes. So, and the third group of people are interested in the recreational aspects, and we're adding the esplanade, the parks, the trails, tying them all together, providing for a number of water use activities that never existed before. So, and sometimes some of those people think that, well, actually the environmental issues and the habitat are more important than the other issues. And some of the people that are advocates of economic development will say, "No, no, if it wasn't for the economic development, there wouldn't be the funds to do the habitat development." And so we've come up with a project that we think really makes sense and satisfies the widest variety of a range of different people. So we're excited about moving forward with that, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Questions?
I do have just a couple of questions. I'm curious about the apartments, and specifically concerned about the quality, the durability, in light of the fact that in general, I believe that people that are living in apartments are probably, they can't afford a mortgage perhaps, and they spend a lot of their money on housing and utilities, and are these apartments going to be constructed to, say, a higher standard of what state of the market is now, so that rather than a 20-year maintenance cycle on some of the, you know, high-dollar capital items that go into structures like that, we're looking at maybe a 30- or 40-year lifetime on these things before maintenance is required? And even, are you looking at partners that are interested in trying to harvest some solar energy to, say, heat water that might be used in that kind of a facility? So can you talk a little bit about what you're envisioning in terms of the quality and durability of the apartment structures that you're talking about?
We're working with, I'm sure that you've heard, Slaton Development, which is currently doing the expansion at Tri-Cities. It's a $90 million project. They average, I believe, around $150 to $200 million a year in doing those types of projects. And what they do, they take their excess capital reserves and they build apartments for their own account. This is not like being a standard merchant builder. We have, over the years, built thousands of apartment units in different states, but we build them and we sell them. Some of them in this state we've kept. Where you, in fact, are going to be an owner, you spend a lot more time making sure that that durability is going to be there. A part of our approach with Slaton is that, take a look at the projects we've built in this state. They are exceptional projects, they have a high durability, they are beautiful even 20, 30 years later. That's our expectation. Theirs have been in smaller communities where they aren't exactly up to our standard, but they said that they will bring it up to our standard. So it's our intent to not let the apartments bring down the feeling of the project. It will be a quality project. We have gone through their plans that they would like, we've showed them our plans, and we're working together to create a plan that will be a very positive, very exceptional unit. When you take a look at the condos, you cannot put a real high-end, not necessarily high-end, but very high-quality condo project right next to a low-end apartments. We will not do that, and we will not allow that to happen. So we're working very closely with them. They're out right now doing RFPs with the same architects that we've used, LRS, one of them, which designed the condominiums. So our expectation is that we will get a good product, and we're sitting there as the same level that you are. We want to make sure that that product is done correctly and is done at a high level, because that sets the standard for the rest of the project, because it's going to come out of the ground first. So as a window to the rest of the project, it will be done at a nice quality, and that will be not only for the buildings and the quality of the buildings, but also the landscaping.
The project, one of the projects that we did in, like Oswego, was Oswego Point, and it consists of 422 apartments and another 112, which were apartments, and that we ultimately converted into condominiums. And interestingly, the value, the assessed value of the condominiums was about twice what it was for the apartments. And so we kind of keep that in mind when we do apartments. We think about condo conversion, because we know what it'll do ultimately to the tax base. It has a very positive effect. But the architectural styles that we use, you'll notice, are not too extravagant or wild. What we expect to happen, we want to happen, and we've had happen in other projects, is that the feeling, the appearance actually improves over time.
One thing I couldn't identify in the packet of information was the phasing of the relocation of the sheriff's dock. Could you speak to that?
That was actually defined as being in Phase Eight, but it really is not something that we're writing a check for or that the city's writing a check for. It's going to be part of the county. So the intent was to move it over to that peninsula area, which would be over in this area, and we had done costing to put the road in, et cetera. So as it moves through with Phase One, they're still here, Phase One and Phase Two. Ultimately, we would like to see them over there. They like that concept, but it's something we need to work out with the county in terms of who's writing the check.
Okay. In terms of construction sequencing, will the pedestrian, the trail, the Clackamas Trail, be open to pedestrians?
Yes.
And how would that be managed if you've got heavy equipment there doing a lot of grading in that area?
Oh, it'll, the grading, Phase One and Phase Two, does all the grading. And in concert with that, the esplanade and the trails go in, so that'll all be done. When this, when Phase One and Phase Two, which is all this green, and the yellow, which is underneath here, are actually completed, all those will be in, the landscaping will be in, so it'll be a completed product. It'll be like a very nice park. What will happen is that when we come back in here, and these will be rough graded for the condominiums right along here, so this will actually be planted out and it will have, you know, a grass material until we come back in and start doing that work. But they'll be basically not finished graded, but very close to that, so there will not be disturbance to those.
So when I was writing my loop from the Tri-Cities Treatment Plant down to John Storm Park during the construction period, I'll still be able to make that access?
Yes.
Through that area?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm also curious about...
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I think we need to clarify. I think that when, as I'm understanding it, that the trail will be open once it's constructed, but during Phase One and Phase Two, you're potentially having a trail closure while the mass...
Yeah, I'm asking...
There has not been identified a temporary trail construction to provide that connection.
What we've talked about as a temporary trail that would help you out, since during that construction close to the water, you wouldn't be able to go there because it would be heavy equipment in construction for a period of time. But what we talked about as an alternate point, an alternate course, or an alternate route, was to go down to Old Agnes and get from there back up to where the treatment plant is.
Right.
Yeah, there was nothing that was in the planning statement, but we, I think we actually had that conversation with Doug Neely. He made the same request, and he said, "Well, we will work out a temporary program to make sure that somebody can, you know, still traverse that area."
Okay. And then the last question I have right now is related to the grading plans along the existing Main Street. That Cove Bank will be graded to that 1 to 3 slope ratio?
I'm going to defer to engineers here. Do we have, we're not modifying that.
If we're not, if we're just using the same location for Main Street, is there, will the existing vegetation remain on the Cove side of Main Street, or does that get graded and replanted? That's...
While they're looking at that, we'll go to the next question.
That's all.
Okay.
Chris Leonard.
I think most of my questions are, you know, the three camps you described are all I can identify with, but the fourth one, I think the most important one that we have as planning commissioners is thinking about future generations and use and access and availability, and I think you've answered some of those. One of mine, my specific questions was some of the access questions that I think that Carter was getting at in terms of temporary along there, so I'll wait to hear, you know, that as well. But I guess my other question is with the new, the future parking lot with the Tri-Cities parking lot, is that going to be general available to the general public for use in the area? What's the idea for use of that parking lot?
The way that works, we call it a reciprocal parking agreement. And basically, the reason that works is because the peak demand time for recreational users occurs at a time other than the peak demand time for office users. So it'll have mostly office users during the day, and there will be a reservation of, did you say 50 spaces?
I think it's 55.
55 spaces for the public. Then when the offices are closed down, the biggest demand for recreational users is on... on evenings and weekends, one summer evenings. So there will be quite a bit of parking available for the public at the time that the public really needs it.
So that's basically just open during those non-office hours for public as well as a portion of it for the public?
Exactly. At this project that Randy had mentioned earlier, Oswego Point, we put in a amphitheater there. And on Wednesday nights, until I guess two years ago when they expanded the park because it was so successful, it was absolutely packed. I mean, they actually started bringing in buses and parking people at different locations to bring them down at the amphitheater. So it was a very positive part, but that reciprocal use really does, is very positive. And that's a very large site that we have there, so it'll work out well.
On the three-dimensional picture you had of the park area, it shows that you showed the auditorium, or no, the stage. That is included in the plan at this point. Tony mentioned it wasn't in this piece, but you're not planning on changing that?
Yeah, and it's not something that's monumental. I don't know if you've been to Foothills Park over at Lake Oswego. It's probably a 20, 30-foot diameter concrete slab with a, and that one, it's totally open. But we thought we would like to put a canopy-type thing there. Does two things. With power there, you can actually mount speakers, you can have a nicer little venue, so yes, it is part of it.
Okay. And then my question about the parking for that park, that's something that will be controlled so that it can be available to the public as opposed to, I've been to some of these condo-type programs where if you're visiting, there's really no visitor space. I mean, and so you go find it wherever you can park, you park along the street, or I just want to make sure that that area down there would be open to the park, people weren't going into the park as opposed to overflow from the condos?
Well, you know, it's going to be a little difficult to control that. We will have that two-and-a-half acres, almost 250 additional parking spots. So it's not like that's the only thing that was there. When we were doing that strictly, I would agree that we'd have to have some way of policing that and actually, you know, ticketing or whatever. In this case, with the large spot that we're going to have in the other parking area, the two-and-a-half acres, that's a very substantial area. And that's way beyond anything that we've ever done in the past, so I think we're covered as far as the public goes.
And to some extent, that the draw is a function of the artist. And if you have Pepe and the Bottle Blondes or Pink Martini or something like that, you're going to have a huge crowd. But if you select people that aren't quite as well-known on their way up or something, still, you know, good music, you can affect how big a crowd you draw.
I'm less concerned about that as I am where just the day-to-day activities around the park, where you've got somebody that wants to go and walk along the peninsula, and they can't find a parking spot down there and have, you know, and they can't find a parking spot in the business, because we hope that business turns out to be great, and you aren't able to get down there. I'd like that area to be at least signed for park use only or something along those lines. I think that will be beneficial, you know, for the public. So at least they know that there's a place to go and they'll be able to have a spot.
That's definitely acceptable to us, and we can just make that a condition.
Well, the other thing that we can do is manage that to some extent through the Association of Unit Owners, and if their guests are starting to take too much of the public space or something, we can enforce that through the association.
Well, and that was my other question, is additional parking. I'm looking on here, and I'm, it's a small picture, but it doesn't appear that you've got, you've got like, I'm not sure how many, for instance, how many condos are in Building Six? But let's say you had 30 condos in there, it doesn't appear that you have more than 30 spaces, so I'm concerned with that overflow, or if you have a customer or if one of your clients has two cars, you know, where will they be parking that second car?
We're very close to 2 to 1. What did we end up with there?
I'll look it up and just decide. There's the parking underneath there.
It's full of parking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, full, subterranean.
Very good. Didn't see that looking down on it.
No, it's getting close to 2 to 1. I don't recall exactly.
So if it was a 30-unit building, it would have almost 60 parking spaces.
Great.
We try to get 2 to 1 covered if we can. If we can't, there'll be some of the parking spaces that are outside that'll be assigned, and then the balance would be available as guest parking.
Very good. That allays my concerns. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant this time?
Maybe go back. I was curious about how ODOT's Table One, Additional Vehicle Trips related, is it appropriate to try to get an answer to that at this point?
And I think you're referring to the October 2nd memo where, and I believe you're probably talking about their concern about the use of the 25% internal trip capture rate versus 15%, which is identified in the ITE as a standard, I believe. And if you use that, if you use a different standard, you come up with a different number, which is what ODOT used. If you look at Exhibit 5, it's a letter from Mr. Replinger addressing the 25% that they used. And what it says, this is addressing ODOT's comment, I believe this is the one you're referring to. Would have identified a 15 to 20% internal rate cap, internal trip capture rate that have both origin and destination within the development. And then describing the adjustment, it would have separately assigned 5 to 10% of the trips to have origins or destinations at the adjacent commercial node of Oregon City Shopping Center. So that's where that discrepancy was.
Thank you.
And it'll just add one of the, at the end, it talks about, you know, this is a type of value that, for trip adjustments, so it's applicable when there are mixed uses involving residential, office, and retail. This similar reduction would not be applicable between residential subdivisions, for example. So it's specific to this type of a use.
Thank you, Tony.
Okay. Very good. Then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Back to the grading question. I was wondering if you had a question, had an answer to that.
Ah, thank you.
As part of our work, we're intending to do some grading along the Cove side to the ordinary high-water mark at slope probably no steeper than 2 to 1.
So the bank will be restored and?
Restored, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And could I get your name on the record for?
Adam W. Jessick with Cardinal WRG.
Thank you.
And just for reference, the grading Phase One, C 6.1 shows the grading, and then the landscape plan, L 103, in the small site plans you have as well as your big ones, shows the replanting schedule along that bank.
Okay. At this time then, we will go to public comment. Tony, you have some?
I have Ms. Gail Curtis from Oregon Department of Transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I want to speak on behalf of support for the staff report recommendations. I do have a question, however, with respect to Main Street. Is it correct that there will be sidewalks on both sides of the street? I believe it's a collector's status street. What is the intention with the cross-section of Main Street?
The Main Street cross-section is, starting on the Cove side, so kind of on the north-easterly side, is sidewalk, planter strip, bike lane, travel lane, then you hit center, then going the other way, you've got travel lane, and then a extra-wide bioswale for stormwater treatment. So at this point, we have, in the right-of-way design, a sidewalk on one side, but then we attach that additional condition of approval to address the pedestrian connectivity from the Glacier Site to appropriate spots to cross Main Street to get to the sidewalk on the other side as well as the esplanade. So we're envisioning pedestrian connectivity needed, I don't have the pointer, at the roundabout, at the intersection of Agnes and Main. So we've identified, you know, you're going to have a marked crossing as part of this intersection here. And then, like on this scheme right here, the applicant has two identified intersections from the private street to Main Street, where we would be looking at identifying safe ways to get folks either across Main Street or to a location where a safe crossing can be made. And this is where we were discussing the pedestrian connectivity requirement as part of the detailed development plan for this site.
Typically, collector's streets have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And I guess I would have a follow-up question would be, is that cross-section consistent with your transportation system plan?
We, working with the city engineer on the cross-section for the street, we determined in trying to utilize a green street here, design, and that because of the location and the benefits and amenities being provided around the Cove, that trying to get folks to the sidewalk and esplanade on that side was probably going to be where most people were going to want to walk and be a part of that, the sidewalks on that side, so that's where we focused getting folks to. We do have the ability to amend our cross-section of our street to try and create a green street situation, just because when you create these green streets, you, to try and accommodate the stormwater, it takes up a lot more area than what can be accommodated in a five-foot planter strip. Now whether, you know, as part of that, if there's some type of another pedestrian system needed, you know, we've made, we've made the recommendation that we're going to utilize the sidewalk on the north-northeast side around that Cove and get them to the esplanade. And, you know, and per that condition, we also do have the vehicular and pedestrian requirement connecting O.C., Oregon City Shopping Center to Main Street, which will be part of that Phase Three design on the detailed development plan.
With respect to the 25% mode split, our point there was that it really underscores the importance of providing an excellent pedestrian and bicycle system throughout this site to achieve that target. And furthermore, it really underscores the importance of public access, that people can have the opportunity to get into, get to the water, get through the site. And the developers indicated that there's going to be public access, but the ownership of that is not completely clear to me and may be of interest to the Planning Commission. I would just encourage you to scrutinize the public nature of the access throughout the site development. It's not completely clear to me how it's going to work, but I think it's very important and that the details of that and the legal nature of that is going to be important because I think over time inherently there's going to be some conflicts between the people that own and live there and the people that will want to use the site. And since the property ownership is public now, it's an opportunity to retain that public access. And that concludes my comments. The condition will be retained where there will be emergency access on the north end to Washington Street, and then the mitigation for the traffic mitigation will be increased from $100,000 to $120,000. So if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All right, Gail, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
If I could respond real quick? Go ahead. Through this, through this process and working with our city engineer, you certainly have the ability to modify street design and right-of-way designs. For example, Agnes Avenue is a collector as well, and we're not, you know, we've designed that street with a sidewalk on one side because we are building a 20-foot esplanade, which is where we want folks to be. You can certainly build redundancy. I'm not sure it benefits the system. You're creating impervious surface, you're providing, you could provide an additional six-foot sidewalk between Agnes and I-205. You certainly could do that. We're recommending against it because we believe that you have an adequate pedestrian system with the esplanade that will serve folks, and that's where folks are going to want to walk. You know, we are providing a sidewalk on one side of Agnes. We think that this is appropriate. If folks want to walk, there is a sidewalk available, and that's on the, on the 205 side of the condominiums where folks could walk. And we took that same approach with that, with that part of Main Street. You've got a resource. We believe we can provide safe pedestrian connectivity through the Glacier Site and Oregon City Shopping Center to Main Street, get them across Main Street to the resource and the, and the public path that we're building along the Cove. So, you know, it's a design that you can certainly, you know, we could certainly add sidewalks. It's an additional, you know, six feet of impervious that you're putting in, and so that's something you just need to weigh against the benefit of having sidewalks on both sides in this location. And if there is that ability, if it's offset based on the other investments going in on the site as well as the design of the street, the stormwater functioning, you know, to make it fit within that right-of-way, we could certainly do away with the 12-foot bioswale, and we'll just, you know, we can pipe it, put a planter strip in and put a sidewalk in. So these are the kind of the benefits we're trying, we're trying to weigh, to just keep increasing right-of-way, to add another six feet to that right-of-way for the sake of a sidewalk is something you need to decide if it's prudent and if it's necessary. We're making the recommendation that we believe that you've got a pedestrian system that is adequate and can be designed safely and provides good connectivity. And that's, that's where we were coming from with our recommendation.
If I may, perhaps part of the solution is signage. One of my concerns is that the design read or that, it's possible that the design could be such that it appears to be private, and people are confused or people feel unsure or uncomfortable about using the esplanade or the condominium, parking lot, or whatever those access points are, which, once again, isn't completely clear to me, how you get to the esplanade. But it seems to me that perhaps signage could be part of the solution, that it does indeed say "public access." But I think it is in the details.
It's a, it's a good point. I've been in situations where you don't know. It's not obvious, and I think that's a good point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I guess concerning the ownership, obviously, Main Street and Agnes Avenue will be public right-of-way. North Park will be owned by the city. We have a condition through the Glacier Site between Main Street and Oregon City that it either be public right-of-way or a public easement. And we can certainly design that appropriately to reflect that it is a public street. Signage may be something that's appropriate, we can certainly, certainly look at. The esplanade will have public access guaranteed over it. So, yeah, the educational component of that may be something we need to look at, but I believe that we have protected the connectivity, public access for both bike, pet, and vehicular in the best interest of the residents. Oregon City will be utilizing that and it's not being turned over for private use.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, it's a good point, and I think even if you could do a map, you know, a 3D-type map that shows, you know, in red, what are, what are public pathways and what are not. I mean, that would be, I think, sufficient to make it clear to the residents. I mean, if I was living there, I wouldn't want people wandering around my elevator, you know, at middle of the night. I'd prefer it to be somewhere where it's obvious that it's a public space. We could do that, I think you could do that with signage.
One of the things which we'd like to do on these projects, and in this case, we'd have signage right up here for people in the esplanade, coming down here, this will be an access point upon the esplanade, and so will this be here. And not only having a signage saying how to get on, but talking about the habit yet, how you can keep it protected on a several projects. So if you come through these points like this right here, there'll have seating here, there'll be signage, it'll pop out on the Cove, how we're trying to preserve it, and that'll happen all the way along. So we'll actually get a little historical viewpoint on the Cove, on what's going on in the hand of that, so it's a very important part of it. It actually makes people buy into, versus saying, "Oh, they'll all go down into this area to tell them what's going on and why we want to protect this," so it's a very important part that we'd like to do.
Thank you. You look like you want to say something.
No, no, I was waiting for you.
All right, I'm ready. Go ahead.
Next person?
Please.
Okay. Mr. Paul Edgar.
Paul Edgar, I'm coming in representing the Kenema Neighborhood Association as the Land Use Chair. We've talked about this in our, in our neighborhood, and it's about the environment. And there is a critical issue about endangered species, fish- And there is a critical issue about endangered species, fish habitat in and around the cove and the grading that will effectively eliminate a lot of the trees that cool the water during critical times, including providing the natural habitat for fly hatch that is important for these endangered species. When we had before the city commissioned, the biologist from the Oregon Fish and Wildlife, he talked about approximately 50,000 steelhead and salmon smolt coming into the cove in their annual migrations of frog down and that these fish coming into the cove have a higher probability of survival as they go down into the ocean when they do gather the strength and the opportunity to be in the cove. So that's one issue that I think we need to have this review of what the actual implications are to the environment because as you, as was stated, it's an equal part. It may be one-third of the picture and it really needs to be understood. Are there alternatives? Are there things that we could be doing that are better, more responsible for maintaining the habitat? And I would like to see that really flushed out. Another issue that I'm very concerned with and I've tried to make a point of is in the ITE calculations of trip generation, and I, this is part of process too. And it's, when I looked down at the report, the Kittleson Report, and it showed a condo unit and we, now we know it's 220 apartments, they said it was 216 at the time, but in a sense said that there's only 110 AM peak period trips total, 20 in, 90 out, out of 220 apartments. And I've gone out to Clackamas County, I've gone out to other municipalities, and I've gone on to other jurisdictions to check on this. And most every one of them had told me that that, they could not see that. It's kind of like saying, we have no schools close by, we have no grocery stores close by, and we don't have any ability, we have limited employment opportunities. Right now, 80% of all new homes that are bought in and around Oregon City are having people commuting 15 to 20 miles one way. That's what we now experience and have been experiencing for the last 10 years. We just don't have employment opportunities in and around Oregon City. So when we look at this and we turn around and say, how could that number be? It becomes just amazing. No one could buy in on it. No one could justify it. So we, that brings question, are, are these figures really that accurate? So we get into the mode kind of thought. Somebody says, well, how much of this is going to be transit? Well, we don't have a transit connection right into here. So how much of this, how do we get into this? So I look down here and I'm saying AMPM peak period trips. I couldn't find anyone that came back and told me that they, this was within 20% of what they thought reality was. Anyone. So if, now that boils back to a critical issue, it's called concurrency. If in fact, these numbers, and this is really truly understated, if some of these numbers just don't, I don't, just like at the restaurants, a restaurant could not survive economically with these number of trips that are identified here. They couldn't break even. So it just doesn't, doesn't cut bait. So if we got into a concurrency situation and this is wrong, who picks up the tab? It's the community. It's people like me, citizenry. And, and would I come back and say, if you want to go ahead and approve these things, we need to have some type of guarantees, maybe some types of ability recourse that comes back and says, after a period of time, after five years or 10 years, if in fact, these numbers don't sink in with the reality of what actually happens, we could do an assessment and that the developers become held responsible as time goes out. I know as an example, I talked about possibly developing some property I own into condos. And I wanted to find out what the recourse, in the, in the city of Portland, where I own the property, they wanted to have a, me to kind of sense fund a long-term insurance guaranteeing my responsibility far past the time that I've sold it or whatever's happened out of it, to being responsible for the impacts, negative and positive. I just like to see this to be part of it because I really feel that these numbers and some of these impacts are not real. I don't know that they can be justified. I would like very much for you to, if you can turn around and tell me that no one eats, no one has children, no one's going to go grocery shopping, everybody's going to be riding a bike and, and, and everybody's going to be walking over to some transit center a half-mile away or greater, I just don't believe that's really practical and reasonable. And in my classes that I took at Portland State in Transportation, they would take and debunk this right from the word go. Thank you.
Okay, Tony. Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? For, against, or? Come on back up, Gail, if you'd like to.
Gail Curtis with the Oregon Department of Transportation. I just wanted to add a point that this is a regional center and for that reason sidewalks on both sides of the street should be further considered. I appreciate this balancing that you're trying to do, but there, there is a significant traffic generation that's going to occur. And we are trying to get people to transit, which is up on 99. And sidewalks and the safety crossing issues and children and elderly, it is something that I want to encourage the Planning Commission to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have no further discussion or further comment from the citizens, we'll call the applicant back up to rebut.
Thank you, Chairman Powell. Just a couple of things on Paul's comments. The city commission did invite some experts to come testify at one of the city commission meetings. They had Ben Meyer from the National Fisheries and Todd, I can't think of Todd's last name.
Paul.
Yes, from Oregon Fish and Wildlife. And interestingly, well, just, I guess just for background, there's just two areas. There's one segment up there, purple area that's going to be preserved. Macy and Associates, I think it was, did the city's initial water resource plan and they went through and they rated the habitats. And the purple area up on the peninsula is the only area that was rated as a significant or good, not excellent, but good quality habitat. The other areas of habitat were along the, where the yellow area is, where most of the industrial uses were previously. And that was rated as fair to poor habitat. Same thing on the other, on the west side. So the habitat that we're going to be improving, it's not like we're going into a pristine area and wrecking a nice habitat. We're going into a very poor habitat and improving it considerably. And interestingly, some of the comments that the experts had, Todd, for instance, said, if there's not enough shade there, the fish will go someplace else to find shade. And he said, there won't be any net loss of fish. And similarly, Ben Meyer, who spoke primarily about endangered species of salmon and steelhead, said that they're not going to be very interested. Those fish are not going to be very interested in coming into the cove because it's too warm. They like cold water and they're not going to spend time hanging out in the cove. One, the other thing to mention, I suppose, is that all these things were previously approved, were not appealed and are really not subject for additional discussion. Now, the city commission did set up, or is in the process of setting up, a working group that will look at how to preserve, how to improve habitat. And we'll be a part of that group. And fortunately, when they, they definitely, when they define the roles and responsibilities of that group, they acknowledged that the cove has already had its approvals and they weren't looking at trying to sidetrack or derail the cove process, but rather look on a broader scope about what can be done to improve habitat. So I think that's a very positive thing that, that came out of it. I'd like to ask Phil, Phil Worth from Kittleson, to make a few comments.
Thank you, Randy.
Good evening. Philip Worth, Principal Planner, Kittleson and Associates, Portland, Oregon. Mr. Edgar raises a couple of questions about the trip generation calculations that were done as a part of the study. And in fact, you've seen a couple of studies from us for the cove development, so I'll keep my comments just to the recent supplemental that we made in August. And it's fundamentally, the change is the change in dwelling units, type of units. We've gone from strictly condominium to a combination of condominium and apartments. There's a, as Tony noted for you, there's a standard that's available industry-wide. It's referred to as the Trip Generation Handbook, published by ITE. It's currently out in its eighth edition. It's been around a long time. And I think the key is simply this, you've, you've fundamentally got two choices. You can go out and specifically count sites that are very similar to what it is that's being proposed and rely on those counts and ultimately that trip generating characteristic to represent what you think your new development would produce. If there aren't similar sites that the city, and in this case, the state, would otherwise agree to, then you fall back on the, on this document. And in this case, that's exactly what we've done. We've relied on this document and the studies that support it. In the case of condominium, townhomes and apartments, the studies are significant. There's more than 50, for example, data collection efforts done for apartments. And there's well over 40 done for townhomes and condominiums. So it's a broad base of data that we're drawing from. So the reliance that we have is in the fact that we've got a large number of studies that the curves that we draw between the, the points of data are fairly good curves and show a good fit to the data. And so we rely on this information to do our estimates. So at this point, not having any other evidence to, to review and evaluate what we've gone with, we rely on this standard and the endorsement of the city and ODAN as a reasonable approach.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Any questions, Phil?
I do have one question of Phil. So what other handbooks or, or benchmarks are there for predicting traffic volumes and capacities, given plans like we're reviewing tonight?
Well, there's, there's only one other that I can think of, and I've only been at this about 17 years, so there could be things out there that I'm, I'm not familiar with. But the Urban Land Institute produces some information on trip generating characteristics of certain types of land use. And given its name, Urban Land Institute, it tends to focus on urban areas and fundamentally on mixed uses. And it does as much documenting the potential parking generation as it does the actual trip generation of uses. Suffice it to say, this, this book, this trip generation book, is the standard that's most broadly used throughout the country. Most municipalities and counties throughout all 50 states reference or rely on this document if there aren't other specific studies done that they have a greater confidence in for their area.
Chris.
So in past projects or projects that you've done where you've had to utilize this standard and then fast forward to actuality and reality, have, well, I guess that's the first question, have you measured what the actuals ended up being as compared to? And if so, what are they as compared to the predictions that you made utilizing that standard?
The simple answer is, well, in two parts. Yes, we've done that, a before and after study. And the after study, yes, is different than the estimate. So then the question starts, well, why is it different? Is it, is it truly that the use itself is, has a uniquely different trip generating characteristic than you'd had otherwise thought? Or is it the relationship to the adjacent land uses? Or is it the fact that other dynamics are going on that, that this study simply can't account for? So what you end up with is a lot of questions and not necessarily a lot of answers. What we've seen over time in before and after studies is that when there are differences, they tend to be more based on the economics. Just like today, given our economy, when we go out and we do traffic counts, they're lower today than they were two years ago, but we still have the same population. What, you know, what's the difference? It happens to be the economic conditions that we're in. So when we're in a very vital, robust kind of economy, there's more trip making going on. And when the economy is down, there's less trip making that goes on, or at least less vehicular trip making that's going on. So it's these things that, that are having their effect on any one count that we might do across any one driveway of any particular use. That's the value of having a, a robust or a broad database to draw from is there's protection in numbers, if nothing else, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other rebuttal comments you'd like to make? No? All right, thank you very much. Well, Tony?
I guess I'd just reference you back to both memos from Mr. Replinger, which assessed the scope, the methodology used, the trip generation numbers, the distribution, the background growth, and found that they were reasonable, they were justified, and they could be defended. So you do have, obviously, you've been able to question the applicant who created that information, and you also have a very thorough review from our transportation engineer that reviewed those, that study. In addition, we were discussing the, the public paths and whatnot and Condition of Approval 26 from your previous land use decision, the original one. To ensure that the public area, open spaces and pathways are protected, the applicant should record public access easements over all pathways and open spaces described as open to the public in the application. So I believe you have been down this road and addressed that previously.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring that back up to the Planning Commission for discussion and other questions of staff. Gentlemen?
In general, I'm, I'm supporting this application for the amendment to, to both the concept plan and the detailed development plan, but I have a few questions that, well, specifically a question for, for Tony, I think, to start with and then, and it has, has to do with the two sidewalks on Main Street. And the design right now, I really like. It's, it's innovative in that we're, we're using a bioswale to try to mitigate stormwater runoff into the water resource. And at the same time, tradition tells us that in order to be safe, we need to have a sidewalk on both sides of the street. And I know that in, in some communities that are doing innovative planning, they have ideas of free space where cars and people and bicycles all share the same space. And potter, potting arrangements are put in that area and the natural tendency is for things to slow down and people to be aware. And, and so I'm, I'm wondering, is, is the, is the bioswale something that, that would prohibit putting a sidewalk on the, on the west side of Main Street? Could the parking lot be reduced to accommodate a sidewalk on the, on the west side of the bioswale? And I guess I'm wondering, have you had any conversations with the developer about, about that idea of accommodating pedestrian traffic around the perimeter of that parking lot parallel to the Main Street?
Our, my conversations with the applicant concerning pedestrian connectivity on that side of Main, on the southwest side there, has been mostly focused on providing safe and direct pedestrian access for the users of the apartments to get to the public right-of-way. It hasn't been It hasn't been for the through movement of someone walking along Main Street.
And one of the conditions of approval is directed toward coming up with some solution to moving people from those apartments to these crosswalks, I suppose, right?
Correct. Of somehow designing this so that these users can safely get to access points to cross Main Street to get to the pedestrian system on the other side. There hasn't been a discussion of, should we continue, because should we put a sidewalk from the 99E Bridge all the way along Main Street, across the frontage on the west side of the storm facility, all the way to the 205 Bridge? That we were envisioning that folks would want to walk on the side with the mixed-use building, with the Cove, with the access to the Esplanade, and continuing around.
And the sidewalk on the east side is an eight-foot sidewalk, right?
Let me see.
Or is it six?
I believe it's six, with a six-foot bike lane.
It's pretty small.
Actually, it says six-foot sidewalk, six-and-a-half-foot planter, and a six-foot bike lane. I guess where I'm going, Tony, is I'm trying to understand if the sidewalk, being a safety issue, is internal pedestrian traffic patterns through the apartment complex, sufficient mitigation for that safety? And in my judgment, it would be. And I think that the trade-off for that kind of an alternative design idea to move people to the correct crossing points and to move people to the water resource side of the street to do their walks, or to move from one part of the city to another, that makes sense, and to me, that's an appropriate give and take. And so I was just kind of curious about what kind of teeth are there in these terms and conditions to accommodate efficient movement of people to those crossing points and safety?
And I believe the condition specifically call out the need for that pedestrian connectivity, and it's identified that, you know, as part of that, you're going to need to most likely provide some type of a pedestrian marked crossing as well as access to that sidewalk to make sure that that pedestrian system does function correctly.
Thank you, Tony.
And I guess, sorry, I was looking for Condition Number Eight. During the detailed development plan for the property south of Main Street, the applicant shall incorporate a pedestrian circulation plan through the site that provides access to safe Main Street pedestrian crossing sites, specifically the roundabout, the intersection of Main and Agnes Avenue, and the two proposed driveway intersections from the site with Main Street. Pedestrian crossing improvements may be necessary, such as marked crosswalk and sidewalk ramps. I think you've got a pretty definitive condition of approval as to what's required to get people safely across Main Street to the pedestrian system.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. That makes sense to me in this context. I guess for the other commissioners, I'm wondering, does it make sense to walk through the items that we've been asked to consider that are on pages 42 and 43, one by one? Maybe you could lead us through that.
I think it does. I think it does. We can have further discussions as we get through, but I think it's important that we bring those up now and we can talk about it. Number one is the, our consideration whether we should review changes in the phasing as a Type One rather than a Type Two review.
I agree with this staff on wanting to make it a Type One review. I think it's logical, it makes sense, and we've looked at this a long time, and we're just talking about picking up a full phase and moving it. And so it really shouldn't consume more staff time than required.
Yeah, my concern, you know, prior to this, after my reading, you allayed those fears in the questions I had, so I'm okay with that. Okay, so that's that. Planning Commission reject the easement between Main Street and Oregon City Shopping Center through the Glezer Site. And either, and it says either indicate the minimum dimensions acceptable or allow the applicant to resubmit the design and location as part of the Phase Three D detailed development plan.
I would specifically recommend rejecting that easement and asking the applicant to come back with a more detailed design.
In Phase Three? As recommended in the Phase Three?
I would agree with that as well.
Okay. The applicant's proposed to amend the application include up to 216 apartment units.
Or 220.
To 220. No problem there. Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Go ahead.
Okay. Public restrooms, code requirements, in effect, July 31st should apply to this.
I agree.
I didn't hear any issues from the applicant, so I think that's fine. All other amendments, with the exception of the apartments and restrooms, shall be viewed by the Oregon City Municipal Code that was in place. Again, I didn't hear any issue with that. The original application included wall seating and a ban shell. We heard the applicant mention that would still be there, so I don't think that's an issue. And the proposal to not move Main Street, that's basically no change.
Yeah, we're being asked to consider the way that this has been reviewed as an existing condition.
Correct.
And we're not judging it based upon the original submission of the relocation of the Main Street. So, and I agree, I agree with the way that staff has viewed this as an existing condition. It makes sense in this context.
As do I. And then last, determine whether to amend the existing condition of approval for the design of Agnes between North Park and Washington Street. And that was the 20-foot section.
The question, I do have a question there.
Go ahead.
The question there is that just to simply provide 20 feet of pave versus what they would have previously had to follow under Condition Four, which would have required a sidewalk, bike lanes, a planter strip, and a one-way southbound emergency use? Is that correct?
Right. So, yeah, my sense is we would want to rely on our previously approved condition of approval number four.
Yeah, what would be the justification to take that out and just have it pavement?
One wasn't provided, you know, in the original application, that section we're talking about right now was proposed as 20 feet of gravel. The Planning Commission made a finding at the hearing that the section that they wanted was what you just described. So, you know, if the applicant would have asked for 20 feet, would you have, so it's up to you. Do you think 20 feet's appropriate, or do you want to stick with the condition of approval that you previously had?
Well, I mean, it's an access point that's not going to be open for traffic, for the most part, right?
Except in an emergency.
Except in an emergency. I would think 20 feet would be sufficient, and if it were in a, and if it were properly built to withstand the weight of the vehicles that are using it, I would be fine with that. But...
And so you're talking about stepping away from our previous condition of approval from the original concept?
I am, because it seems to me it's a bridge to nowhere, to use that term. I mean, we're putting sidewalks to an end to nowhere. We're requiring him to put, I mean, we would be requiring him to put bike lanes, a planter strip, and a sidewalk to be used for only emergency uses and for no other reason.
And so what's on the side of this road?
What's on the side of the road?
Yeah. Is it just?
It's through the...
The ditch?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's the crown of the road, goes to the gravel, goes to the ditch, and it's just an untreated back alley exit to...
We would need to treat the water for water quality regardless, because it'd be new. So we would be treating it in some fashion.
So I get where that occurs, it's not decided.
So the question would be, that 20 feet of pavement would be pavement, and then on either side of that 20 feet of pavement, what would exist?
We would need to work that out, whether that be some type of a swell, or it collects it and takes it to an area to be treated. In some fashion or another, it will be treated, just don't have that detail yet, because we didn't go down this road, if it were a 20-foot section.
And will that road be gated for emergency only?
Yes, it will be bollard.
And I did hear the gated road. So...
Yeah, I'm fine with that in terms of basic functionality, if it's not to be, it seems to me that when you just put in a 20-foot roadway, you're saying, basically, do not enter. You don't want people going down there. But in fact, you know, somebody could walk from Washington Street down to the Cove through that access and not use the Clackamas River Trail.
And so you basically have a 20-foot walkway?
That's right.
A paved walkway?
Maybe.
With no vehicles, except in an emergency? Right? I mean, that's what I see.
I guess that's what you're saying, right?
Right. And I don't see, I don't see the value in spending the money on a sidewalk there when there's, it's going nowhere and probably never will. And if it does, then we'll require a sidewalk.
So if we're talking about removing Condition of Approval Number Four from CPO 805 then, is what you're suggesting?
That's what I read, correct?
Yeah.
And amended.
I'm fine. I can go that way, too. I was thinking from the perspective that at some point, there could be access to Agnes from Washington Street.
For vehicles?
For vehicles, in the southbound direction.
I guess my question...
Not until we work out a design for the I-205, 213, to change.
That there's some local access across I-205 to Forsyth Street from Washington that might connect to the Gladstone Pedestrian Bridge, for example. But that's not on the table today. So we're going to say it'll never happen at this point?
That's where I was going, too.
But that is a serious problem, moving local traffic from the Cove area to the Park Place area without having to use 213. And that's not what we're talking about tonight. And so when I was thinking about sidewalks and bike lanes and a road, that was what I had in mind, was that someday the city could be connected without having to go across a highway in that direction.
Right.
And if we're talking about making that a separate project for a separate date, then I agree, we can delete Condition of Approval Number Four from CP 0805.
Well, we fought that battle with Agnes Street, so...
Yeah, no, I'm okay.
So we'll be amending Condition of Approval Four that requires a 20-foot pavement section to be constructed for Agnes between North Park and Washington Street. The full Agnes Street section shall be constructed as part of Phase Six, which is when the last condos go in on that side in that area.
Okay.
Would be my recommendation.
Okay, that's that.
Two other, we had probably add a condition concerning signage indicating that the 20 spots by North Park are for the public.
For public use?
Yeah, just allow staff to come up with the appropriate language with that without trying to write it right now.
If I could throw in, maybe while you're in your writing mode, I'd like to see a condition regarding pedestrian and bike signage through the development, maybe a plan for the signage or something to that effect.
Well, and the applicant, I mean, said that there would be, their plan was to put signage at those locations.
Now, are you talking about signage that says this is the public bikeway?
Yeah.
And the Willamette Greenway between Willamette Park and down to the south waterfront area, are you familiar with that area? And if you go along that path, the way that that path is signed is that the private property owners very discreetly post a little sign that says, please respect our private property. And so that path is essentially public property, and in some places, it is in fact private property, but marked by the private property owner. So maybe it should be a case that the private property people mark their territory.
That isn't really what I was, I was getting at, more of a master plan signage, like where you actually have a large map of the area that you can visually see.
Like an interpretive sign.
That's right, that's right.
I like that idea.
That's what I was thinking, though. And not as opposed to the individual...
That would commemorate that, I think, on both ends.
That's right, that's right. And people can get a grasp for what is the flow.
Sure.
How are they supposed to get through there?
Okay. So in order to identify the public access ways through the site, we'd like some type of an interpretive sign providing direction. Okay. The other issue, temporary path during construction, Phase One and Phase Two? I'm not sure that I heard.
It sounds like that's a construction detail. Would you agree or not agree based on your experience in dealing with these types of projects?
I could, you know, I could see it being closed.
Let's put it in the Condition of Approval that a detour utilizing the old Agnes Road Route...
We got to be careful, because we closed Old Agnes for...
A detour be identified, at least.
Let's identify detour.
We knew we were going to have to identify, because Tri-Cities is still going on.
Right.
We've got Agnes closed right now, so we'll have to identify a route.
A route.
And I don't, I don't know.
Right, that's the question, is the timing.
Yeah, and, you know, those are on-the-ground decisions that somebody has to make, but let's go ahead and put it in the Condition of Approval so that, you know...
Just a route, but not identify the route.
Yeah. It's got to be the best route.
Everton, Milwaukee, down to 99E, over. A temporary bike-ped connection for the Clackamas Trail during construction, detailed development plan, Phase One, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other that you caught?
Conditions two and seven, I believe, were changing from 216 units to 220 units.
Correct.
Other than that...
Okay. And then further comments? Chris?
Well, I would only say that I'm in favor of this project, as I have been and continue to be. I think it's going to be excellent for the community and for the city. I'm very confident in our traffic studies. I believe that I haven't been let down yet in all the years that I've been doing this, and it's both the City Commission and the Planning Commission, and I'm confident of the numbers. I feel good about them, certainly more than some of the nebulous comments that have been made in the past. So I'm very confident we can move forward with this, and it'll be a positive thing for the city. So thank you again for your seeing us and being here.
So at this time, do we have a motion?
Do we need to wait till the conditions?
The only question was whether he could rewrite, he was going to write that one.
I'll move to pass as amended.
CP 0902, DP 0901. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Groner.
Aye.
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you very much. You bet, good job. Good luck.
Good question.
Just going to go through, at the last minute, where your minutes...
I'm sorry. I apologize.
You will notice they are very abbreviated.
They are.
We are, they're a little too abbreviated for my comfort, but I'm trying to get there. We're required to provide minutes of your meeting. They do not need to be verbatim, you know, so we're trying to move to, one, save money and resources, copying, et cetera, et cetera. Since we're, everything's online, this is online live right now, it can be accessed at any time. We're going to try and abbreviate our minutes, similar to the City Commission. So like I said, I think these are a little too abbreviated for my comfort, so we're going to work on that. We can certainly take them back and change them if you like, but we're going away from the six, seven, eight-page summaries of comment to try and just encapsulate thoughts and motions.
And, oh, sorry, and I think that's a good idea. My question, my concern is, for instance, the last... My question, my concern is, for instance, the last couple of meetings ago, I was watching it on the Internet and on television, and you were, you were not, you and Pete, you could not be heard.
Okay.
And so we lost all that. So, there is nothing there for that particular meeting that I'm aware of. So, that, we would have to rely on that, and if you could go back and-
The problem is, the minutes are coming from this.
Oh, are they?
So, if we didn't catch it online, this is the only recording voice we have.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it was the position of the mics or what, but you guys could not be heard at all. And I believe we had a couple of other people up there, and it's happened with the City Commission, too. I guess that's something we should be concerned about.
Isn't that why we have that super advanced technology?
I'm sorry. Ms. Curtis, can you guys please either take it outside or be quiet? We're not quite finished yet.
We're just doing our minutes. Thank, that's all right. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's why you have that super advanced technology tape recorder on that table right there, isn't it? The backup?
That must be it.
The one with all the light bulbs?
No, the one over here. Well, that could be. It's excellent that we have that backup.
That is for today. That is, while we're transitioning to City Paul, we've lost a lot of our phone capability.
Yeah, and I just bring that up. I don't know what the legal ramifications of that are in not presenting those minutes. I mean, it's nice that you're there, but you're just basically talking, and I don't hear anything, so.
Okay.
Anyway, just an issue.
You know, hopefully, by having little shorter minutes, the turnaround time will be much quicker, and if there are gaps, you know, we can maybe try and fill those in. Not sure, since it's not taped, how useful that would be if we were to be appealed, but, you know, while it's fresh in the memory, we can certainly add those in.
Yeah.
If they're within a reasonable amount of time.
Right, and that would be helpful. And I assume there's no legal issues related to this. We can use video instead of-
Yeah, and minutes, just summarizing, are fine, but I think that what you might consider is keying those minutes into a count, the video count or the tape count. So, if you wanted to go back and hear what Tony said, you would know what part of the tape count to go to.
Which is an ongoing conversation we're having, you know. It's wonderful what the city recorder's been able to do with utilizing the technology and disseminating information and making it available to everyone in a much broader array of Internet, TV, et cetera. The problem is, you know, she has multiple people helping her, okay? So, that's been a discussion, is if we want to go and have live minutes where you're in there tagging the hearing to certain commissioners speaking or certain agenda items, one person can't do it by themselves.
Could there not be just a time clock that's running at the bottom of the video?
But that's the problem. If the print version doesn't key you in to that clock, you don't know, if you wanted to find where the deliberation happened tonight, I mean, I don't think you'd have to have a time clock for everything, but let's say, when the opposition testimony started, when the deliberation started, if you could key that in.
I'm just talking about embedding that time clock with the video.
It's already in there. It's just what they're seeing is citing the timeline to the-
So that you can visually see it.
Right.
Right? So, it's-
Yes, we could certainly take that back and see if it's-
And that way, the person that is writing the minutes, you know, if they said that Kerry Richter made this suggestion, they could, you know, look at the quarter of the screen where the clock is and say whatever the time is. The format-
I think there's a couple of ways to do that, whether it be in the minutes themselves, you know, at, you know, eight-twenty, so at twenty minutes, you know, this comment, or an hour and twenty minutes this comment happened. What you see in the City Commission is, you know, agenda item, you know, four G. You click on it, and you go straight to that item.
Right.
So, it's a little different in that they usually don't have one item that takes two hours.
Right.
So, I think that it's something we can continue to work on, but it's still a work in progress just because of staffing and com dev to be able to do it as excellent as we would like to.
Excellently.
Excellently, thank you. Our attorney saving me again.
I had no objections to anything that was written in these minutes.
I don't know that I can vote on it.
Does that need to-
No, no, it's accurate. It's accurate.
Oh, yeah.
Say your name, what happened, and I was laying on my back for back surgery.
Yeah, you can agree to all of them except that one.
That's right.
There was one point in here, and it mentioned that I seconded something that I didn't, but I can't tell you who did. So, but it wasn't me, and I'll find it.
Probably on the, it looks like the June twenty-second. We're at the bottom of the page there. Chairperson Tim Paul seconded that motion that was withdrawn.
That is correct. That's not me. I did not second it. I don't know who did, but I did not.
We can go back and find that.
June twenty-second. Yeah, thanks. Okay, so, a motion?
Can, which one were you not on?
The June eighth.
I move to-
We don't have a quorum for the June eighth. We'll have to hold that over.
Hold that one over.
Oh.
Can abstain count?
No. Did you listen to the tapes?
I couldn't say. I did a long time ago, but I couldn't say the day.
Let's just hold it over.
Okay.
So, we'll hold over which one of the June eighth?
June eighth, yeah. I'll move to approve the minutes of May eleventh, two thousand and nine, June twenty-second, two thousand and nine, and August tenth, two thousand and nine, Planning Commission meetings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tony, which call?
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Groner.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other business with the commission?
No, not at this time. Just trying to think. We've got, well, land use hearing probably coming in about a month for a new co-location of a tower on a building. Other than that, the next thing you're probably going to be seeing is, we continued the July code amendments. We're going to come back and do a look again at them. That's going to be coming up in November. We'll start that. We'll probably continue that first hearing, but hopefully have a work session with you. So, other than that, it's not a lot of land use actions coming.
I have one question. Where are we at with urban reserve? I mean, I know, does that move on? Is that coming back to us at all?
We have a hearing tomorrow with the City Commission at seven o'clock. There seems to be consensus, as you may recall, I think we called it, I think it was Area Six, kind of everything north of the city. There was, I think that was going to be undesignated. It sounded like we had consensus on that. There was a section just to the east of kind of Park Place. There seemed to be consensus that that should come in as urban. We have this section right here. There seemed to be consensus that that section should come in as urban. There seems to be consensus around Holly Lane. There's not consensus on Newell Creek Canyon, what to do with that. There were some concerns raised about the section south of the city, so that one's undetermined at this point. These sections down by South End Leland Road, there was consensus that that should be urban.
There was that one finger that we had been talking about, that you and I were-
Kanema.
So, we looked at Kanema in two spots. We provided information. We created two different sections. One was Kanema, kind of just south of the city, the bowl area, and then further south down. The one further south down, there was no consensus to bring that in as urban. The one further to the north, they're undecided at this point, so hopefully tomorrow, we will get through the undecideds.
What were the issues surrounding Newell Creek Canyon?
What, who can best afford protection of the area and the equity of bringing someone into the city where they have to pay higher taxes with no development potential of their property? Were the two main issues?
You would think, well, I'll hold my thoughts. Maybe talk to them tomorrow. Just, all right, very good.
Okay.
And one question I had is, and since Kerry's here, maybe you can address it, the public works master plan. My understanding is that the City Commission asked that to be brought back before them, kind of circumnavigating the land use, if my understanding is correct. What's the, what is the criteria for that? How can they do that? And what did they do specifically?
What they did is they pulled up the decision without an appeal. So, they have the authority to do that, since they make the rules anyway. And so they pulled it up, but they will review it against the same criteria that you reviewed it. And my understanding is pay a special attention to the appeal issues that McGlothlin raised to be considered.
So, no new information can be added to this at this time?
Is it open?
Yes, it's open.
Hold on. No, it's not. Paul?
Go ahead, Tony.
On the floor right now. Please let us explain. We, the City Commission discussed this because Commissioner Nocita questioned the notice that we put out there, that we put out, you know, you have an appeal brought forward by the McGlothlin Neighborhood Association, and appeal per our code is limited to the issues raised in that appeal, and only those people withstanding are allowed to participate. No new evidence is allowed. It's on the record. Commissioner Nocita felt that he, his understanding was that we were going to open this up again completely. Mr. Gabisman was at the meeting last Wednesday when we discussed this, and Mr. Nocita and Mr. Neely, you know, had a conversation that if we're recommending that it is on the record, that means no new information, but that you can make new arguments with that information that is currently within the record. Now, if the City Commission decides that they would like additional information, and three of them vote that they would like additional information, they can open up their record, and we will put new information in. They can remand it back to the Planning Commission to address those issues that they believe have not been addressed. So, this is what we're putting forward. And unless the majority of those commissioners say this is not what we want, and we're going to do it differently, this is the method we will be using. So, it's difficult, because our code does not speak to call-ups. It's an ORS that gives the commission the authority to call up any decision, whether it be staff or Planning Commission to review it. The commission did not identify which issues they wanted to review. So, that means that everything that's in there, they can look at. Now, we didn't talk about the half-street, what the half-street design of Center Street should be, okay? No one talked about that. They could certainly bring that up as a topic, because it's in the record. So, that's where we're at right now.
That's fine.
And the caveat is that a majority of commissioners decide, we want to go a different